All right, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to welcome you to our last regular meeting of the Board of Alderman and City of Starkville for the year of 2022. If you would please, I'll call this meeting to order. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance and then an invocation by Alderman Carver. At the first, last regular meeting, I didn't differentiate. I apologize. The next one is recess. I'm so sorry. Okay. But let's, let's go back to standing for the pledge, moment of silence and invocation by Alderman Carver. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alderman Carver, if you would please.
Yes, ma'am. Let's pray. Father, we just, uh, we thank you for this time together tonight and Lord, we just want to remember the reason for the season, which is your Son Jesus. Lord, also just ask to be with Montgomery and the Craddock family this weekend. It's a difficult season for them, Lord. Be with the mayor and each and every board member and every person in attendance here and the families that they represent, Lord. Thank you for all that you do for us in your name, my friend. Amen.
Thank you so much. Let me clear that up. We have a regular meeting and then the second meeting of the month is a recess meeting, so I was, I was specific, but I wasn't clear. So I apologize. So this is our first, uh, meeting of the month and it is a regular meeting and the next one will be considered our recess meeting. So, uh, with that in mind, we need to approve the official agenda with the consented items and I wanted to make a couple of, um, I want to point out a couple of things on the agenda. We have on the consent agenda under Mayor's Business, we have consideration of authorizing an appraisal. Mr. Latimer correctly reminded me that we actually need two appraisals, so we put that on the consent agenda. Hopefully that doesn't mean distress for anyone because it's just a matter of requiring by state law that we have two appraisals. So that was, that was the, uh, first item. And the other one is, um, there was one of those things. Oh, the, we've added one item to the agenda, which is a rejection of the bids. Uh, the bids came in much too high and we believe we can do better than that. So Mr. Kemp has asked that we request authorization to reject the bids for construction of Main Street. And I would suggest that we perhaps put that on consent if anyone has a willingness to do so. So, um, other than that, uh, I need, oh, and I'm sorry, Alderman Sistrung is on the phone, so everything will be a roll call, but, um, so I will, I will pass through and, and ask for, uh, comments and, um, anything to be changed on the official agenda or the consented items. Alderman Carver?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Sistrung?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Rupp?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, are you putting the, um, are you putting the, uh, rejection of bids on the?
I would like for someone to do so. Would you, would you be so kind?
I was hoping everybody could kind of give us a little more, just kind of background or something.
Okay, that, that'll be fine. And we'll just leave it off and we'll, we'll deal with it when we get to it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, anything other than that?
Nothing.
Okay. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, Mayor. Thank you.
Alderman Carver?
No, ma'am, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no, um, changes to the agenda or the official agenda other than the ones highlighted, if you would please, I could use a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items.
So move.
I have a motion from Alderman Rupp. Do I have a second?
Aye.
I heard, I believe, Alderman Carver. Um, if you would please answer yea or nay as the city court calls your name. Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung?
Yea.
Alderman Rupp?
Yea.
Alderman Brooks?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous and I will read the consented items. First, we have consideration of the minutes of the November one, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. Second, we have consideration of the minutes of the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two recess meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. And then we have consideration of the minutes of the November twenty-two, twenty twenty-two special call meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. Under Mayor's Business, we have consideration of appointing Cody Burnett to the Golden Triangle Regional Solid Waste Authority for the term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven. B, we have consideration of authorizing two appraisals of the property that is the right-of-way of Atkinson Way for uses outdoor patio seating for adjacent restaurants. Under Board Business, we have consideration of approval for the twenty twenty-three holiday schedule for the City of Starkville and if the Governor of the State of Mississippi designates additional days as paid holidays, by proclamation, the mayor may designate such additional days as paid holidays for eligible employees. Under Community Development and Planning, we have consideration of an encroachment agreement to allow replacement of a balcony within the roadway at one oh nine East Main Street. Two is consideration called for two public hearings for amending the Unified Development Code. Under Engineering D, we have one consideration of engineering services agreement with Atwell Gent, P.A., at a cost of nine thousand two hundred dollars for the design, planning, and execution of athletic field lighting and associated power systems for the J.L. King Football Field. Under the Fire Department, we have request authorization for Lieutenant Taurus Young and Sergeant Tyler Davis to travel to Pensacola, Florida to attend the twenty twenty-three fire conference on January the thirtieth through February the third of twenty twenty-three at a cost not to exceed two thousand dollars of advanced hotel and registration. Two is request permission to apply for a hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant program awarded by U.S. Department of Transportation Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to be reimbursed with an eighty-twenty match for Hampton Radio's face mask and gas detectors. Under Human Resources, we have request authorization to hire John Baker as part-time custodian in the Stark Utilities Department. We have request authorization to hire John Kitchens as a certified police officer in the Starkville Police Department. Three, we have request authorization to hire Mauryal Bonner as a full-time maintenance worker in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Under Parks, we have consideration of purchase of split rail fencing in the amount of twenty-six thousand six oh six seventy-two from Love's Home Center, the lower of two quotes. Two is consideration of to purchase two dedication wall plaques for Cornerstone Park in the amount of six thousand five hundred and thirty dollars from Gentry Signs, the lower of two quotes. Three is consideration of purchase thirty-nine bin blocks for Cornerstone in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars from Concrete Block Supply, the higher of two quotes, but which includes offloading of the blocks. Four, consideration to declare a steel slide mound grater, aerator, pitching mound, and an air compressor surplus and sell on GovDeals.com. Five is consideration of the transfer of three X-Mark mowers to the sanitation department. Serial numbers three one three six one zero zero six one, three one three six one zero zero six two, and four zero 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 nine three one seven three. Under the Police Department, we have request approval for Sure Restore LLC to remove, clean, and repair mold-affected areas throughout the Police Department at a cost of eight thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-two cents, the lower of three quotes. B is request approval to apply for the one-hundred percent reimbursable fiscal year twenty-four, four hundred and two Police Traffic Services Grant for the continuation project of Police Traffic Services seatbelt speeding and child restraint enforcement for approximately six hundred and eighty hours in overtime enforcement. C is request permission to apply the one-hundred percent reimbursable fiscal year twenty-four, four oh five D, alcohol, oil, drug, and parent driving enforcement grant for the continuation project of DUI enforcement to be used to fund two DUI officers in approximately six hundred hours in overtime for DUI enforcement. D is request approval to purchase a new twenty twenty-two Ford F-150 Super Crew Cab V-eight engine truck at forty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars from Mack Hype CDJR in Jackson, Mississippi, the lower quote, as a replacement vehicle. E is request approval for TriStar Luffler and Brake to replace transmission in a twenty seventeen Ford Explorer VIN number seven one six five at the lowest estimate of five thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Under Sanitation, we have request, uh, approval to declare thirty dumpsters as surplus property advertised for sale and sell to the highest bidder on GovDeals or sell directly to the scrap. Under Utilities, we have consideration of the transfer of a temp plate valued at four thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars from the Water Department Inventory to the Street Department to be used in repairs caused by water repairs. Three, request authorization to advertise for requests for qualifications RFQ for an engineering firm to provide services for the wastewater treatment plant comprehensive evaluation. Four is request authorization to advertise for requests for qualifications RFQ for an engineering firm to provide services for the water system and treatment comprehensive evaluation. Five is request authorization to advertise for requests for qualifications RFQ for Community Development Block Grant, CDPG, for the Henderson Road Sand Road Sewer Project. Six, request authorization to declare the Utilities Department Copy Machine SNJPCCD three zero zero LR as surplus and list on GovDeals if not transferred to another department. Seven, the except emergency authorization consistent with presidential determination number two zero two two dash one nine from Trans Armor to rebuild five transformers in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Or eight is accept emergency authorization consistent with presidential determination number two zero two two dash one nine from Trans Armor to rebuild one transformer in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred dollars. Now, is request authorization to approve tranche agreement number two as a supplement to the Green Invest Agreement, contract number TBA dash four eight three two six A with TBA. And last but not least, number ten, request emergency authorization to approve the cost for sewer repair on Cole Street from Michael Box Construction in the amount of five thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Thank you, Mayor.
My pleasure. And then just a few consent agenda items. So, the next item is announcements and comments and this is a fun night because we got stuff to talk about. I'm going to get to make employee introductions, but before we do that, we need to crawl a little bit about, uh, let's see, we have a big egg bowl that we brought home, Egg Bowl Trophy, and we have a little Egg Bowl Trophy that we got. And then we have a six-day state championship that Starkville High School got. So, we are rocking and rolling in the athletic department. And I know that everybody's pleased about that. It's very exciting for all of us. I think they're having a presentation on Friday night and I think they're still talking about a parade. So, we'll see what happens for the Starkville High School football team, but we are very proud of them.
Amen.
And absolutely, and we have a lot of folks invested in Starkville High School on this board, don't we? So that is, I thought that was just really cool and, and we are, we are excited about our football team, so. Uh, also want to mention how good the parade was. We had a huge turnout, really neat. Uh, probably one of the biggest that I've seen from a crowd standpoint and almost the biggest from an event, I mean, from an entry standpoint. So, real close. And then I also wanted to let Alderman Beatty and Alderman Brooks know that the two kiosks, however late they are, are now in Starkville. So, we've got them in there. Um, we have, I sent you a picture, Joel, and have you got, Joel, we all have to pull that up? Can you, can you post a picture of the kiosk just so we can, oh, a little bitty one, okay. There we go. Kiosk, that's the one by Condo Box and the other one is up further by, um, Ben Six Twelve and that area, so. We got kiosks done. It may be after football season, but we, we pushed as hard as we could.
Better light than that.
Happy, that's all right. Happy to have you. So, uh, that's one picture. The other pictures I wanted to put up just so that we'd have them and y'all could see them in, in big size, uh, is going to be the pictures of the fields of Cornerstone as it stands right now. So if you just kind of roll through those, there's, there's all of the fields. We're real close, guys. We're very close. So that's one island and there's another one where it's one plot. And then we've got a picture of the pavilion and there's one of the fields and then we got a picture of the pavilion. So, I just wanted y'all to see it because they're really, they're really cool and smooth along. So, uh, we're, we're proud of that majority back there. They've been working on it. Obviously David Fuller and, and all of the construction folks have been working hard to make sure we make a first weekend in March grand opening. So, look at it, look at it making that happen. Um, other than that, I now have employee introductions, which I'm delighted to do. We've got a lot of fire folks. And we even have one environmental services gentleman, which I believe I may see him in the back right there. So I'm going to start with you, sir. If that's okay. Um, this is Dustin Evans. He's a sanitation worker one. He's originally from Columbus, Mississippi, but has made wonderful choices now living in Starkville. We're happy to have you. He previously worked at Baby Dudes Bar and Grill in Columbus. He's also a wedding DJ and in his spare time he enjoys watching sports and spending quality time with his family. He's enjoying his work with the city and hopes to have a long and productive future with us and we appreciate you. Thank you for being here. Thank you. All right, and we will move to a whole bunch of firefight folks. We see the, we see the shirts. So first I have Kamal Williams. Okay, coming up, there we go. All right. Mr. Williams was born and raised in Crossit, Arkansas. Is that correct? Crossit? Okay. He's a high school graduate of Cro- Crossit High School. He likes to play soccer, football, and ride his motorcycle in his free time. He has one sister and a twin brother. Currently a member of the United States Army Reserves. Thank you for your service. We appreciate that. He's attending Mississippi State and studying for Bachelor of Science in Medical Technology. Welcome. All right, and next we have Colton Birmingham. Born and raised in Houston, Mississippi, his hun- hun- his hobbies, excuse me, are hunting and working out. He's a pat- passion for fitness and wants to be able to help others reach their goals. And you're going to need that fitness for helping folks in the fire department, aren't you? All right, we appreciate it. Welcome to Starkville. Thank you. All right, next we have Hayden Pierce. He is the son of Bobby and Natalie Pierce and Holly Lavon. He's from Knoxville, Mississippi, where he's been part of the volunteer fire service for over a year now. He graduated Knoxville High School in twenty seventeen, graduated East Central Community College in twenty nineteen with a degree in liberal arts. He has a beautiful baby girl named Avery Anne. That's a pretty name. He's engaged to his girlfriend of two years, Abby Woods, and he feels as though God has driven him toward this career path and thankful the Starkville Fire Department has given him the opportunity to be a part of our family. So we are delighted to have you. Congratulations. And next we have Shane Russell. Shane is thirty-one, was born and raised in Starkville. Graduated Starkville High School, so you're feeling pretty good too about it, aren't you? All right. He grew up in Green Oaks neighborhood with one brother and two sisters and his parents still live in the same house today. He's single with no kids but have a cool dog named Appa and two cats, Smokey and Manded, and possibly a third because some show, some cats show up uninvited. I understand. Trained in boxing and MMA since he was twenty, he enjoys fishing, cooking, and playing darts. Welcome. And last but not least, we have Nicholas Evans. His, he is twenty years old, born December twenty-fifth. You've got a birthday coming up. How cool. He's originally from Amory, Mississippi, but moved here to Starkville in May of twenty twenty-two with his wife Courtney. Aside from a fire, being a fireman, he does mechanic work, which is something not a lot of people know. And when I'm not normally working home, I'm spending time with my wife and our two pit bull puppies Valkyrie and Vanya. So, welcome. Glad to have you. I'm assuming that's not a worker's comp injury? It is. Oh, whoa, whoa, well, hopefully you'll be fine soon. Oh, I'm so sorry. All right, well, welcome, welcome anyways. So, all right, that is all from me. So Alderman Carver, anything from you, sir?
Uh, no, ma'am, but I would say if they want to leave after a few minutes, some people stay, some people go, but feel free to get up and go at any point. Thank you all for joining.
All right, thank you. Alderman Sistrung?
No, ma'am.
All right, Alderman Rupp?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
I would mention about the grant for the airport contract.
Yeah, absolutely. Go right here.
This is for, for everyone here and for the board also. You guys remember we authorized the Airport Board, Director Lincoln back there, to, uh, to, uh, to try to, try to get a, attempt to get a grant for our new terminal building and, and we authorized them to, uh, seek the services or, or contract with Mike Haney, who was with Golden Triangle Airport, who has recently retired. And, uh, they came with about a ten thousand square foot building and around five point two million dollars or so for the grant. And we, we didn't get it all, but we just got word that we did get about three point two million dollars of, of that and we still got two more rounds to go. So that, that gets us a long way toward getting that new terminal and if someone flies and goes around, you know, we, we've certainly outgrown hours and, and seen these other times around and kind of make, make, you know, shame us a little bit on that. So, I'm excited about that and I know all those guys are too. So, uh, they, you know, we'll keep up the work and try to get some more grant money, but, but three point two million dollars is a, is a good start.
It is. And, and out at the airport, we have some awesome things going on. Mississippi State has got that, uh, that unmanned or uncrewed, as they're now calling it, um, drone that is apparently, uh, not only nationally a leader, but also globally. So we are leading the industry and it's all happening out at our airport. So, you know, we need to step up our game and I'm glad to see that the grant's helping us do that. So. Uh, Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, ma'am. Thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yes, ma'am. Go Yellow Jackets! He mentioned, come in, come pick you back on what you said about the parade. It was, it was great, well attended and people have been complaining about the thirty-minute parade, so we had an hour-long parade. It was great. Jeffrey got to have a chance to see you and your daughter. I mean, you know, I just stood on the sideline because I had three children in the, in the parade, so, and the mayor combined. It, it was great, ma'am. Thank you so much. And most of all, it was pretty downtown and a lot of people commended you on that, so it was great.
It's beautiful. It is, it is a work of art that we all participated in, so I'm really excited about it. Thank you for saying so.
Congratulations to, uh, Starkville Yellow Jackets and the coaching staff, most of all, their players. They, they was a number four seed and they went all the way, came all the way back and be in the state championship. And I think whatever they trying to do, we should be able, the board should be able to try to help them to succeed and hey, have a good day. Enjoy it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We'll see what they do and I'll wish y'all know if I find out anything that, that we can participate in.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, next up we have citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to come in and make comments to the board. You have three minutes to do so. It will be timed by Ms. Horton, our city clerk, and, um, you are free to share information with us. Mr. Turner?
Greetings, men. Well, my name is Albert Tomore. Seven, two, the mayor, to the, uh, five chief, to the police chief, uh, to the sanitation. Our, uh, ladies, we thank you all for getting us through. Our holidays and we got two more holidays to go. But, uh, in all that, we got to be all hands on deck because, uh, every reality is the grand dragon is still spreading hatred and it's affecting everybody. Uh, we have a issue that is also affecting everybody, uh, in the lease that I signed every year. Uh, you cannot let your, uh, life be, or gas be, or anything be cut off of your subject or eviction. Uh, we have had some problems with, uh, electric. Uh, people not knowing how much they bill, uh, uh, when, uh, they going to see the bill, uh, or be. We, we are getting notices that, uh, you got to say a time to, uh, pay the bills. It's sort of, it's just a hardship and a frustration to not know how much the bill is and then you have to, yeah, we'll, uh, hold on to what the lease says that is that, uh, all utilities is just my business.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close citizens' comments. We do have one public appearance. Um, this is TBA Green Invest. If you notice, one of the things that was on the consent agenda under the Utilities, uh, Department was associated with the, um, Green Invest Program. So Mr. Josh Woodson with TBA is here to give us just a little bit of a preview and Mr. Kemp is providing supporting documentation, I believe, here.
Yeah, so, uh, Edward, thank you for, uh, sharing those, that one page there, uh, Mayor and esteemed board. Thank you all for this, uh, honor to be before y'all. And, uh, and we certainly, uh, on behalf of TBA and our board and our, uh, leadership team in November, really appreciated the hospitality and just the red carpet that you rolled out for, uh, TBA members. And, uh, I will say, one, they noted it was, uh, one of the best board meetings they have ever experienced. And, uh, and of course, the, uh, the community and that experience was part of that, uh, of their visit. So, um, a little bit about TBA. Our, we are the generation of transmission, uh, utility in the Tennessee Valley and we value our partners, uh, Stark Utilities and, uh, and a hundred and fifty-two others. And, um, and the TBA Act called us to, uh, focus on energy, economic development, and environment. And so, uh, by doing, um, you know, by fulfilling those three Es, uh, we have a great responsibility and, uh, and in the area of clean air, uh, we've got some pretty, uh, pretty strategic, um, goals. By twenty thirty, we are expecting to reduce carbon by seventy percent. By twenty thirty-five, we're expecting to reduce carbon by eighty percent. And then to twenty fifty, actually having net zero. And so that's going to be, it's going to need some technological improvements to get to that net zero. But, um, I'm proud to say that Stark Utilities is leading here in Mississippi, uh, in the TBA, uh, service area. They have, uh, participated in the Green Invest, um, program. The Green Invest Program, uh, basically is a program that TBA has, has launched to allow, uh, both, uh, TBA and customers and partners to all, uh, basically, um, take into account the, the value of the renewables that are being built in the area. And so just fifteen miles down the way, we have the Golden Triangle Solar Project. And, um, and Edward and his father Terry had the vision of, of seeing that project and say, hey, we're going to be a part of that. It aligns with their sustainability initiatives. And so, um, so with that, uh, certainly appreciate Starkville Utilities and, uh, and Mayor and the board for y'all's consideration for the, uh, the tranche agreement to, uh, to reserve the capacity that is part of that two hundred megawatt, uh, solar project in the Golden Triangle.
Yeah, I was just going to talk a little bit about the, uh, the rationale and kind of where we've been and where, you know, what is before the board tonight. Again, all the credit goes to the board and your commitment and support of the Green Invest in the past. Um, several, a couple of years ago, um, the board committed to thirty megawatts for part of that project that you can see on the second page there. But the contract price at that time was a dollar a quarter for those reps. Um, you know, that was a big investment. That was a big commitment. Um, since that time, y'all know the world has really changed. Uh, supply chain, uh, materials, contracting, um, we're experiencing that in every, in every aspect of our own works. And, um, we, uh, you can see that the contract price for the reps has gone up from a dollar a quarter to a little over three dollars, three dollars and thirty, uh, twenty-three cents, um, for those reps. So our recommendation is to, um, to, to change that, uh, commitment from thirty to six point three. Six point three aligns with, um, the, the Stark Utilities and City's opportunity in the future to unlock, um, as part of our flexibility option with the long-term agreement, the five percent that we are allowed to, to generate. And what this does is it allows us to be kind of first in line, if you will, when the opportunity becomes available, which we hope is very soon, um, to exercise that flexibility option at a project that is right here and I'm back going and that we can, our customers can see and see the commitment that we're trying to make and we're trying to be a leader. Not only to do that for our customers, but we also feel like it's a great economic development opportunity to attract new businesses as we incentive to offer them, sorry, with that, we have to offer them.
Well, and I want to reiterate because that's one of the things that Joe Icktiggins of the LINK has said is that this is something that a lot of the businesses are looking for as they're choosing communities in which to invest in and reinvest. So I think that's a, I think it's a wonderful program, but, but I, I do have to ask, am I understanding this in seven years, you've got, you're looking at a seventy percent reduction?
That's right.
So, ten percent a year, basically?
So based on two thousand and five, um, was our baseline.
Okay.
And so we're on the trajectory to get to a hundred percent, but, um, that will probably incorporate small modular reactors and, um, technology.
So it's solar as well as nuclear?
That's correct. Other clean generators.
Okay, all right.
Is modular reactor, that's a nuclear, a smaller scale size nuclear reactor, correct?
That's correct.
Um, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, how will the two Cumberland Plant reactors that have been converting coal into gas, were they in the pipeline to be something different? Uh, and how will that affect that, that getting to eighty percent by two thousand and thirty?
Yes, and so with us retiring tomorrow, our fossil fleet by twenty thirty-five, we'll be converting those to gas and of course, gas burns a lot cleaner. And over time, uh, we'll actually construct, uh, Cumberland where it can actually burn gas or hydrogen. Hydrogen is actually a clean, uh, clean solution, but right now it's, you, it would take more energy to generate hydrogen as it would be to burn it. So, so we've got to let some additional research, uh, occur to produce the hydrogen to allow it blend. Um, but, uh, so, so, um, so the gas generators will be a cleaner option and that's where you call for your reduction. And that's kind of where we, that twenty thirty-five is when our fossil fleet, which is one of the oldest in the country, is retired. But, um, TBA thought it prudent, instead of putting more patches on the old system, go ahead and go with a, a gas generation fleet that is nimble enough to be flexible, uh, with the new landscape that we have. With renewables, with distributed generation, we're seeing a lot more, a lot of change in, in our, uh, industry. And so we're trying to prepare ourselves to be a lot, a lot more nimble.
Mr. Wood, may I, one more?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wood, will the modular nuclear reactors, will they all be probably located within existing facilities where you have existing nuclear facilities now? Or will there be new sites or be, any kind of idea where those things, you know? I know one time, you know, TBA was going to build and, and scrap the, y'all agree?
Right.
Thing, but I mean, what, how, how, what about the distribution of those type?
Yeah, so, so we would, um, probably, it would probably be new locations and we need, uh, generally a small, uh, abattoir water to actually help cool the system, but those, um,
Like a ten-ton waterway?
A ten-ton waterway would be an option. Um, I mean, that, that is a plausible option. Um, what we've been told is they're in research and we've got, so- And we've got certain decision gates that we will make sure if we build two, we can build twenty. And so, we're not going to go into, uh, launching projects that, um, are beyond, uh, what would be good for the valley and for the rate payers as we, um, keep our rates low, low as possible. So, Clinch River is where our first one will, uh, will be. And that's in kind of Knoxville area.
Is the regulatory hurdles for, I'm going to quit asking questions. It's just, just fascinating, uh, what the stuff TBA is doing. Well, uh, will the, are the regulatory hurdles for the new, smaller, is modular, uh, generating, nuclear gen- generating facilities, is it as stringent as it is for the big ones? I mean, there hadn't been, I guess, in the last forty years, what the one selling company is doing over on, it, uh, in Georgia is the first one of those that's been...
Yeah, so, so TBA actually has the last, uh, large nuclear plant that has been commissioned, uh, in, in the twenty-first century at Watts Mariner Two. So, um, so others have been working and trying and struggling to get into operation. But, uh, small modular reactors, as you can imagine, uh, actually are on submarines even today. So, we will be, um, modifying, um, and, and we will, there's too many. We can't utilize the full, um, I guess, intensity that a solar, uh, I mean, the, uh, small modular reactors will utilize on submarine. But, um, but they're, they're scheduled to be like a three hundred megawatt, um, project. And so, they're scalable. We can basically bring in equipment, put them together, kind of like a Lego set, if you would say. And, um, and, and have, um, them close to a body of water, but it doesn't have to be a huge body of water. And so, uh, and, and they're designed such that they will shut down in a very safe manner, uh, even without, uh, pumps. It is a self-securing, um, uh, system. And so, we see a lot of potential to help us get to that zero percent net carbon.
Thanks for answering the question.
Thank you. Anyone else ask any questions? Alderman Sistrum, I didn't forget you. You got any questions with Mr. Wood?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen? Thank you so much, appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work you're doing as well. All right, next we have, uh, public hearings. We have three of them, they are all, uh, related to twenty-one nineteen eleven matters. So, um, Officer Perez is going to make the presentation for the seat.
Okay, Vice Mayor, Board of directors. This one is going to be for five fourteen West Main Street. Parcel number one one eight zero, no, one one eight O dash zero zero dash two three three dot zero zero. This is the, uh, property link information, um, showing the owner as Ms. Leela Bell Pines. This is the first notice of the violation sent to the property on Monday, October twenty-seventeenth of twenty twenty-two. This is the notice of public hearing posted at the City Hall. And mailed to both the property and the property owner. This is the notice posted on the property itself on November third. That's just the, uh, call, me putting it in the computer, of it being posted at the property on October third. This is, uh, photos of the front of the house. This is the east side of the house. This is the east side of the house as well, um, the, or on the back side. This is the north side of the house. Also the north side. The west side of the house. This is October twenty-fifth, I went to do another inspection. The, uh, state of the house has not changed. November sixteenth, once again, no change in the state of the house. And that's all for that one.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Officer Perez before I open it as a public hearing? Uh, this is an opportunity for anyone. I will open it as a public hearing, you may speak either for or against this item being declared as a, um, as a, being in a state of uncleanness to be administered to Public Health, Safety, and Welfare as such that demolition could occur. Anyone have any, anything that we should say either for? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Any, any questions of Officer Perez? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Will you approve?
I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second? Second from, I'm sorry, from Alderman Rupp, thank you. All right, if you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderwoman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you so much. And the next item.
This one to be, um, one oh four Windsor Road. Uh, parcel number of one one eight H dash zero zero dash one one three dot zero zero. This is the front of the house. This is the public, uh, this is the property link showing the ownership as Jason Matthew Hendrick. This is the violation letter sent to the property owner on October seventeenth. The public hearing notice posted at City Hall on November third. Also mailed to the property on November third. And posted on the property on November third. This is October third, photos taken of the property. This is the front of the house. It was hard to get to due to vegetation overgrown in front of the house. This is the west side of the house. Right at the top there, you can see that holes from the edges of the house were covered with chicken wire. This is the back of the house, it is completely overgrown with, um, vegetation. Also the back of the house. There's, uh, holes along the top as well, covered with chicken wire. This is the east side of the house. The pieces of, um, the top are falling off. This is October twenty-fifth where I re-inspected and there was no change in the property. November sixteenth, another re-inspection. The owner had, um, a dumpster there to clean out the inside of the house. He was beginning to get ready for sale. But the outside of the house had still no changes to it.
The house, as I recollect, it had the raccoons in the cabinets?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I, I just remember that story. I thought that was interesting that they were using it as a forest. Any questions of Officer Perez? Anyone? None? Okay, if you'll let me, I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter? Now is the opportunity to, uh, either for or against our declaration of this particular location as a, uh, state of uncleanness and as administered to Public Health, Safety, and Welfare. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing and entertain a motion. Alderman Carver? Have a motion from Alderman Carver, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks. If you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, thank you, it is unanimous. And we have one more, which is, uh, located at one oh seven East Gillespie.
This one is going to be parcel number one zero two A dash zero zero dash zero eight seven dot zero zero. This is the front of the house. This is the property link showing ownership as Charles Poe. The notice of violation sent on October seventeenth. This is a letter I received from, uh, Mr. Poe's wife. Um, just letting me know that she had received a letter and they were planning on re-renovating the house. On November third, I posted at City Hall the public hearing notices, mailed to the property and the property owner, and posted at the property. On October third, I took photos. Um, this is the front and west side of the house. In the back of the house, as you can see, there's a tarp covering it. It is completely without a wall. This is the east, the northeast side of the house. You can see the tarp covering the back. And the damage done to the corner of the top. The broken windows on the west side of the house. On the twenty-fifth of October, I re-inspected and no change had been made to the property. November sixteen, once again, a re-inspection showed no change to the property.
Thank you. Any questions of Officer Perez before I open it as a public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, now would be your opportunity, either for or against. Either for or against? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing and I need a motion. A motion from Alderman Carver, do I have a second? Second from Alderman Rupp. If you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you so much, Officer Perez, appreciate your presentation. Okay, next item on the agenda is a request authorization to reject all bids for the construction of Main Street Water and Sewer Replacement and Authorization to Re-Advertise. Mr. Kemp, would you come up, please, and, um, give us a little background on this?
Sure, uh, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board. Um, we opened bids today, this morning, um, we received three bids. Our original engineering estimate was around two point four million dollars. Um, we, we felt pretty good about those numbers and those quantities. But all three bids came back around the, um, upper four, if not five million dollar range. Um, so with the low bid being around four point eight million. We've had some conversations internally, as well as with some of the contractors who submitted bids. And we really feel like there's some opportunities to revise the plans a little bit, to mitigate, take out a little bit of the risk for them, provide a little bit more clarity, um, in definition of the plans. And we will be working on doing that over the next thirty days with the goal of trying to, um, get this back on the street for advertisement near the end of January and opening bids in February. Uh, and that will, that will kind of keep us similar on, on schedule, a little bit, uh, beyond. But, uh, if we were able to start in March, we're still kind of, uh, hitting that at a good time from a construction season standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beatty, questions in particular?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Kemp, after the limited cost, uh, how do we miss market? I mean, is that, or is it just a sign of times? You'd have to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah.
Construction costs taken the last two, you know, half two years have gotten off the scarrup, they've gone up significantly. Is that, that's just a function of...
Some of it is inflation increases, but those have been cooked in to the estimate as we've gone along as well. Um, I, I really feel like, uh, there was probably not as much clarity on the bid specifications and the plans that should have been, at least that's some of the feedback that we heard. A lot of the things that were unknown were included as, uh, items to be absorbed. So, that price and that risk was reflected in other, um, bid prices or bid unit prices. So, the more definition that we can provide that, the more clarification that we can provide to minimize or mitigate that risk for the contractors, I think the more competitive price would be. That'll be a source.
What, I mean, we get bids, we, we estimate two point four, we get, in what range do we, does it become comfortable, powerful, whatever, uh, rusted, and, you know, report it?
Some of the feedback we heard today, again, the, the landscape is changing very, very quickly right now in the construction world. But, um, they indicated that this is, this could be, should be a two point five degree, maybe not.
Two point five, I'm sorry.
I feel, I feel hopeful about it. Uh, I mean, I don't want to get hopes up too much, but I, I do think it's worth another crack.
Is that, but that's not significant change in time to, to compromise, I mean, I'm not...
No, I, I don't think it's going to sacrifice the quality of the, of the, and we're not going to, we're not going to cut any corners because we know how important this project is.
Got to be down to an hour a year, though, something like that.
Anything else? Okay, Alderman Carver.
Yeah, well, it's been changing very rapidly in the construction field and in the supply chains.
Yeah, one of the things that comes up that we talked today of the contractors who just do the bottom work that's coming on the market right now, especially with all the larger projects. So, at some point, the contractor reaches out to the issue of what they're able to do, what they're able to bid on, what they're able to pursue. And so, we hope that there's still a lot of interest, um, in another, uh, in the future by date. And that's the other reason why we need to be a record to show that people. I don't think the prices are going to change at all, or to, I think contractor availability is what...
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Carver has four.
I'm sorry.
You don't, all right, Alderman Beatty.
They just, they just pull a figure out there and take it. They'll do it for that bar. Also, their, their material costs, everything that, that, I mean, let the cost go up, material costs, you know? Five and all that kind of stuff is just... They're sitting there, they're tossing off, right?
Alderman Rupp?
Yeah, I'll make a link to authorize injection, I'm sorry.
Uh, second from Alderman Brooks, all right. I'm sorry, I didn't get down to this end of the page. Would you like anyone to add? All right, thank you. If you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Step down.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea? I think it was yea.
Yea, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yea.
Thank you, Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous. Thank you so much, and thank you, uh, Mr. Kemp, appreciate it. All right, the next item we have, uh, is claim stock it. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Alderman Rupp, do I have a second? Second from Alderman Brooks? I think we reversed that, didn't we? I apologize. All right, Alderman Brooks gets, gets the, gets the motion and Alderman Rupp gets the second. If you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Rupp, uh, Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right. Now, motion passes, 42. All right. Next up on the agenda is actually last, but not, certainly not least, and extremely important. Mr. Kemp will be providing us some information as it regards the updating of water and sewer rates. He gave this presentation at the work session, which we were very appreciative of. The one thing I would like to change on the agenda. It says effective January 1. I would like it to be February 1, but in the meantime, that will depend on whether or not the board is in support. So, Mr. Kemp, if you'd like to make a very brief presentation on what it is you're proposing, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to reiterate everything, but I'm happy to talk more about anything that I covered on Friday. I think, I think the most important thing is what are, what are the needs? And our needs are, I won't go through this full presentation, but the needs are, obviously, as we just talked about, increased costs from an operations standpoint is starting to eat into our capital budget and our ability to really do these impactful projects that are helping change our system and make it better. And so, the question is why now, I think is a, is a very important, timely question to ask, and I think that we have gotten to the point where our capital is, is kind of started to erode due to the increased costs that have occurred over the last two years. It has been about two and a half years since we last evaluated the rates. The rates, as you could see from the information provided, is comparable with other peer cities, and it is still below the statewide average. And then, also, why is it important? Well, it is important because we have made great strides over the last several years on improvements in Pleasant Acres and in Roland Hills and in Green Oaks and other places around the city, and we, we really feel it's important and we need to continue that. We're really, I think, headed in the right direction. It's just going to take a, it's a long continual process and hope that the board will consider that on the, that's on the infrastructure and the ground. But we, it's more than that. We really want to look forward on our facilities for water treatment and, and production. As y'all may know, we just received a perfect score from the Department of Health in the Drink and Water Report, which comes out every, every year. We got a perfect 5.0 rating, but we're not satisfied with that. We know that there's still work to be done, and we need to position ourselves well in the future, 10 to 15, 20 years from now. Likewise, on the wastewater treatment plant, everything is going well there. We've received accolades and awards from the support in the project that this board is, is invested in with our Biosolids Project. But what is the next chapter? What is the next, what is the next horizon we need to look forward and be prepared for? That's what is a part of this capital project. That is what we're looking at from a comprehensive standpoint and where we want to position ourselves in the future. So, Mayor, that's just a general recap of where we are. I would like to mention one last thing, that two components of our water and sewer rates, one is the base rate and one is the variable rate. The base rate historically is, is part of our capital investment. Everybody pays the same amount for the base rate. Everybody has that same amount of skin in the game when it comes to providing that infrastructure that, that serves their neighborhood, their individual houses, whether it be the water mains, the sewer collection systems, the lift stations, or the, the treatment or productions facilities. And then your variable rate is paying for those additional operational costs that we're, that we're experiencing. So the more you use, the more chlorine, the more materials that we need, chemicals, to treat that higher volume of water, and so that variable rate would, would, would take care of the increased operational costs. So, that is it in a nutshell, and happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. I want to say a couple of things because this is one of the things that the previous board committed to, and this board is committed to as well, and that is our future and our growth and our making sure that we don't find ourselves in somewhat of a situation that Jackson is in. I mean, we wouldn't come close because, number one, we have aquifers, we don't pull it from the Ross Barnett reservoir, but the reality is, we do have aging infrastructure in the ground and we have committed, and I'm very proud of the fact that we committed to go throughout our community and make those investments in the infrastructure, and that is exactly what Mr. Kemp is continuing in the footsteps of his father, where it began. The other thing I think that needs to be noted, and perhaps has not come to everyone's attention, is that we're going to need a new well here soon, and part of that reason is because we're growing, and that's a good thing. So, that is part of that plan for our infrastructure, and, and that's not a small undertaking. So, that new well will create, you know, a huge investment. Was it two million?
I think it's possibly four million.
Four million, okay. So that's the kind of thing that we're looking at over the next number of years, and this is an opportunity for us to keep going. And I think, Alderman Beatty, I think you, you may not have been able to see the Facebook Live deal, but the map that Mr. Kemp had that was on that Facebook Live for our work session is remarkable in what it tells us and how we can respond to those needs. Well, there it is, right there. So you see the hotspots, and that tells us where we need to go next. And so the next place we need to go is actually kind of a combination of Alderman Carver's Ward and Alderman Vaughn's Ward in what's called the Fairgrounds area, which I find fascinating, but we are data-driven, and I'm very, very proud of the work that Edward has done to make that so. So we know where we need to go, and it's not, it's not a guess. So, now that I have spat it off, did anyone else wish to weigh in on this particular topic? Alderman Carver?
I don't know. I'm just going to look at those rate comparisons for companies in the United States. We have that, that's one of the things. Y'all already looked at this tonight. I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, sure.
That's sad, and then maybe I missed one when I stepped out, grabbed a drink, is the other, it doesn't look like something that would be still median, but what about the, the rate increase for customers that we saw on Friday, that slide? Do you have the evidence shows, it was a slide you presented on Friday?
Can you talk about that?
Yeah, basically, we could tell like constituents or what they would.
Yeah, and, and one of the things that we're going to do, assuming the board moves forward with this, is we're going to send out flyers in, in the utilities bill, so that everyone will have that. We use every opportunity we can to provide that information, both social media, city's website, flyers in the utilities bill, so to make sure everyone knows it's coming, and, and that's another reason to wait until February 1, so we can get that data out there. But basically, we go from 4.50 for water and then 4.50 for sewer, which is a $9 base rate, to $12, which is going to be $6, and then $6, so you'd have to go around. Is that, is that the slide you were talking about?
That's a slide, and I guess for the media and everyone, that's a slide that for me is impactful. So you're looking at 80% customer.
As I say, if you look at the bar column near the bottom, the, the green will include the water and sewer. So those customers that we provide water and sewer, you're looking at a bill increase from anywhere from $3 up to $5 per month.
Median average for 80% people, three times, is that safe for me to say as an electric system?
Yes.
Is that safe to say based on the, based on the damage that we can?
Yes.
If you're not running irrigation systems in the yard and obviously with the residential side, you're starting, you know, out and there was probably somebody that might be running irrigation systems, and then you got your yard industrial bottom, but that's the kind of, you know, the kind of question we have to answer when we receive a call. I thought that was a good slide, and then again, the other slide that you were able to provide. I think at this point, I said it before, this board and especially two previous boards have really gone above and beyond, and Green Oaks is one of those that has to, for decades, and that you're starting to see some of the, some of the turn-on investment on some of the things these boards and Mayor have done, and I'm starting to see some, some groundwater, they got a lot more. I think that heat map really shows. I thought that was for my ward, especially just some areas I didn't realize, I guess it's good from, at that point, working with y'all to see where you're getting service calls and. Right, and then I was looking at this Friday, but also, if there's somebody has groundwater that they need, call that in every, each every time. Does that help you?
It does, because we're building, we're building a similar map for groundwater, so there's a real, that's real-time data, and we'll plot that based on their address in the frequency.
Do y'all monitor Nextdoor? I know there's a lot on there, but do y'all take that data and put it on to the heat central line?
We don't actively monitor it, but we are aware, certainly when they pass those things along to us, but we prefer people to, so dispatches either on our name line 3133. They can email us at support@festivalutilities.com. They can report it on our website, or on the city's website. We have a request tracker. Send me an email, I mean, anything that we can identify the address. Again, that really does help us, and we want to know.
I respond to Nextdoor every time I see it, and I, and that's the constant theme, is call 323-3133 and let us know, so that we can track it and make sure that we are responding to it appropriately, which is flushing lines, creating a data set, so that we can try to understand. Because Mr. Kemp is doing more than that as well. He's adding a couple of other things that he mentioned in the work session, which I think is worth talking about, making sure that there aren't any dead-end lines, which is one of those active things for us to do. And the other one is trying to track this down. It appears that some of the construction companies are using our hydrants as ways to fill their trucks, and so we're going to offer them an alternative, rather than doing that using our hydrants and creating some habits with the, with the lines, we're going to give them a place to do that, and if they don't do it, and we find out about it, then we're going to have a bit of a stick along with that carrot to make sure that they are, think twice before they do it anymore, so we can track it down.
Underground goring is a primary one. High-pressure water.
Anything else on the call? Okay. All right, Alderman Rupp?
I'm sorry, if you'd maybe, in this case, I appreciate you making the case for that.
Thank you. Alderman Brooks? Alderman Beatty?
Mr. Kemp, how much does this, like, does this generate?
A million seventy-five thousand.
How much does that generate for cap, in the, cap, cap, what is operating cost?
So, go back to the, we can, this slide here. This showed kind of our graph of the last several years. In the pink line at the bottom is our capital budget. On the top is our revenues, so the white is the revenue.
You may see it better over there if you look at that.
So you can see the last rate increase back in the, causes that increase in revenue and likewise, the increase in capital, but the operations have gone up. Really cut into that, so our capital were left over around $750,000, so application.
The costs, increased costs of capital stuff, I mean, we.
Well, this, this will generate another million dollars, and the majority of that, if not all of it, would go toward capital.
Let me ask you again, I know we've done some analysis on Main Street, South Dumb and Back toward, Ridge and Back toward thing, and I know that the analysis was that that was a newer water line. Well, he's had, there was a significantly up in front of the engineering officer, Caldwell Street. I think that would be, that would be a sign to me, I'd be uneasy about. We go through this project, we pave over, I don't know whether I, I don't know whether I pave over, you know, a water line like that. I think if they've broken a couple of times anyway, it broke and we had to go back in or something, fix it, something like that. I mean, tell me, tell me what you think on that, because that, that may not be the fifth-year-old water line, but if that's a sign, it could be starting to show signs of failure, something like that, and we're doing all this work. Why not that other, you know, fountain feet or whatever from Ridge and Back up to something? It might be a fountain feet from where it is from Jackson Street to South.
Yeah, well, as you brought that up, because I thought the exact same thing when I saw it. So, two quick points on that. First is that water line is about 16 or 17 years old. It's not, it's not significantly, I mean, it's still an infant in this age of infrastructure, right? So, feel good about it, modern materials, appropriately sized. The issue that's revealing itself right there is a, is a service that feeds Caldwell Street. It's not the main line along University Drive, is that connection point. And we feel, we feel like we have that solved with the, with the latest improvement. But we did go down at that time, when that, when the second leak occurred at that location, we went back down to that point, did some exploratory digging to confirm that material and the size of that main that goes down University, and it, and it was confirmed. And it validated what we thought was part of our design.
Let me, well, talk about this. What about, and I know that in the Munea next area, we don't, we're not certificated in that, that area. That's, that's somebody's washers. That's what he's not doing. No, that's, that's what we do at washers. So we're not certified there, but that doesn't mean that we, we get certain customers up here. It's part of our plan in that area to put in water mains and pipe plugs for the added type, type of protection that we would need to maintain the last required rating as we extend the asset.
I think that's a conversation we need to talk about. Those are large, large expenditures of dollars that I think the city is committed to doing those projects within five years, I believe it is. I think we have some preliminary estimates of extension, for example, out toward Clayton Village in the five to six million dollar range.
Does this increase the money? We start to reflect some of our ability to do it?
I, I think we're going to have to do more than just this. It's going to have to be a combination. It's going to have to, we're going to have to find some grand dollars, some external funding to do that. Not within this current structure. It's not going to be able to do everything that we need to do inside of our certificated area, addressing the issues that we have right now, as well as doing these large, very expensive extensions.
All right, thank you. Alderman Sistrum?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Alderman Vaughn? Okay.
I think we're, we're just, with both of them combined.
Yes, sir.
The Adams, the Adams household, how many gallons of water do they use?
Yeah, that adds.
Would you, would you list them, five, seven, eight, two, five?
I, I would be, I think it's probably somewhere in this range, because this is thirty, this is probably about a third of our customers. This is probably about another third of our customers who buy those too. So you're, I think it's probably around, around a year, is about $3.36 increase. On average, you know, it just, it just depends on how many people you have that live in that house, who's running your sprinkler, how big your house is. I think there's so many variables there. Maybe twenty, thirty, uh, I don't know, but I think it's something like that. But if you look at all the water, if you add up all these here, that's about eighty percent of all of our water and sewer. We're going to be in that business in three, four months.
Is that water? Alderman?
I believe we can hopefully have a couple of the secret places.
Oh, absolutely, yes. We're going to, we're going to put flyers in the, in the utilities bills. We're going to put it on social media. We'll put it on our website. Yes, we absolutely. And we have both media here with us today, so I feel sure both papers will cover it. And if they don't, we'll make them cover it.
Yeah, Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Vaughn, that's something really important to us, too. We want to be very upfront with the customers, and, and we envisioned, and I think we've done this in the past, a little quick, one-page guide of the why, you know, when, how much, and, and really kind of lay it out there in a, in a real easy-to-digest format, as opposed to all these charts and graphs. But obviously, if people want more information, they, we can certainly provide that for them.
Well, I have one more. I have Alderman Beatty down here, so let me go down to him, but yes, at that point in time, I believe we should make that motion that way. Alderman Beatty.
Mr. Kemp, is that water usage, what we charge for, on a single, on a single scale, more used, more expensive it gets, or that, it's not?
No, it's the same.
Do some cities do that? Do they, do they charge more as you, as you get into higher uses? I know commercial rates are different, they're higher, but in residential rates, were you getting up into higher uses?
I, I would hate to speculate. I just don't, I just haven't done that research. I, I, it very well could be, I'm not sure.
But I was just glad.
And what Mr. Magoo did on that last slide is he, everybody gives, has different base rates. Some give a thousand, some have no free water beginning, some are 3,000, some are 5,000. So what he tried to do is have an apples-to-apples comparison. That's why that's a 5,000 gallon, even though the majority of the customers are probably not going to use that much every month. But what he was doing on that 5,000 gallon is trying to compare all these different base rates. So there's, there's just a lot of different ways you can, you can set up your water rates.
You still have, what?
No, I, I, I want to ask you something.
Okay, I saw, I believe I saw Alderman Carver saying.
Well, it was about the hundred and, I think, might be 190 customers said it would be super only, whatever, except the water.
Yeah.
Did you come up with the rate for that?
Yeah, I did.
Eighteen sixty-seven.
Eighteen dollars and sixty-seven cents a month?
That's a flat rate, that's eighteen sixty-seven.
And we've got to justify that. I mean, we've got to, we've got to annually assess that. that, minimum annually assess that and make that, and justify that rate.
This is the calculation, I mean, so what we did is we took an average one-year usage for eighty-four customers in Tulking, um, so those are base sewer only customers, their water usage, that came out to be thirty-eight hundred fifty gallons, that average users from water usage, we apply, these proposed rates is about base rate and then per thousand, that's the, the number that Vice Mayor indicated, eighteen sixty-seven per month.
And that, that didn't change since Friday?
No.
Now, I'll just say, I, I support this, and it's tough, because I don't think I've ever supported a rate increase, I don't know of, but, um, it's probably where the rubber week to road isn't much official, and this is something we can quantify and figure, come back in the after scenes from the Green Oaks project, if people are coming satisfied and knowing that you might be dealing with this year, twenty, thirty years, and starting to go, you know, I mean, the city spends a lot of money on a lot of things, but I think when you start talking about, um, you know, I would say life safety issues, it basically says that you're alive, when you come up with water and sewer, um, and anybody on the side of the table, if you manage to do sewer calls, you know, it's never pleasant, um, but if you can solve those, and you've got something that's become of, an issue for years, and all of a sudden, that's not an issue anymore, and it's solved, and the customer's happy, um, that's a rewarding feeling, so I will support this, now, I didn't think that this was an extra, I don't know, extravagant request, I thought this was, uh, I would justify what's left, so, I would support it, I've been doing a lot of thinking about this, but I think that, um, this is some of the things that, that, like I said, previous mayor and board, uh, prioritize some of these projects, and start to wish them, and it's time to continue, so.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beatty, did you have one for the same?
I actually, I just-
Okay, all right. Um, with that, Alderman Vaughn, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. That was the, uh, the race right request, the race, I move it to the coming of February, February one, twenty twenty-three.
All right, thank you, sir, I have a motion, I have a second from Alderman Beatty. If you would please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I couldn't quite hear that, was the motion to approve this effective two one twenty-three?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Alderman Carver?
Yay.
Alderman Sistrum?
Ready.
Alderman Rupp?
Yay.
Alderman Brooks?
Yay.
Alderman Beatty?
Yay.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yay.
It is unanimous, thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Kemp, I appreciate it. Alderman Beatty, you have a question?
Mayor, you talked to us a little bit, but I know that, that you taught Mr. Clarence it has plans, or there's been some talk about something called a notification system, or conference notification system for the city's Dartmouth, that would-
Text messages you're talking about?
Text messages, kind of similar to what Mississippi State has with that maroon alert, and whether some of the announcements or some of the things that we have about this might factor, would factor into, um-
Mr. Clarence, with, with the thought of water rates being notified out, so that we're staying on topic, uh, would you mind speaking to, um, what our opportunities are for providing such notifications?
Yes, Mayor and Board, I'll be glad to give you an update. We have gotten a quote, uh, for a mass text alert system and email alert system, um, where citizens can opt into the system, uh, they can put their address in, and we can geo-target notices, or we can notify everybody within the system, um, and that, that system will come before the board soon, the, the city attorney is currently reviewing the contract for that, so we hope to have that maybe by the next meeting, and we can implement that quickly shortly thereafter. Probably won't be in time to notify for this particular rate increase, but for any rate increases in the future, any, uh, road closures, brown water notices, et cetera, uh, it'll be a pretty pl, powerful platform, and it also has the ability, uh, it gives us the ability to communicate internally as well, we can have internal communication within groups within the city, so it's a powerful and flexible platform, and we're excited to, to have that.
I think it's gonna be an awesome tool for us, absolutely. Mr. Brooks?
Will it be, open, will it be to the city?
Uh, no, it will, it will just be, yes, sir, it'll be outgoing messages, that's right. But we do have on the-
Uh, hang on, just a second, Alderman Sistrum.
We do have on the website the, uh, the request tracker, so, uh, citizens can go in, and there, it's, it's segmented into different, uh, categories by department, by issues, and they can give us feedback that, be it that way, and of course, we have our staff directory online as well, so they can, they can reach out to us in those ways.
Okay, Alderman Sistrum?
Joel mentioned that, um, geo-targeting is a pop, a possibility with this, this particular platform, is that for people who've opted in only, or would it be for all our customers?
That's right, you, you have to opt in and include your address for the geo-targeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, anything else? Alderman Beatty?
Mr. Clarence, this would be across departments too, right?
Yes, sir.
Like power, um, utility department, uh, with, with this substantive or important information that we disseminate to our-
Yes, sir, that's correct, the idea is for each department to have a designated person that can get that information out very quickly, it's a very user-friendly backend for anybody to go in, and, and you can, you can send messages that are time-sensitive, you can send scheduled messages and things like that, but, uh, the, the vision is that each department will use this separately, they will all have, uh, access to that, that administrative side of the system to send out messages.
Would this also include, uh, weather emergency information?
Well, there's an option to include weather emergency, that, that's a, something we can add on to it, we had not envisioned doing that, since there are other entities that cover that, we, we certainly can add that add-on if we'd like to, but you have, uh, Code Red and other alert systems that already cover that functionality.
I know as a retired machine employee, I get the, uh, maroon alert, uh, information on my phone through text, and, um, you know, if, if, if power goes down, and we have something where we lose power, and, and there's, the TV station, you know, the TVs go off, and I guess cell phones work, but, but that, the ability to get that text, you know, I, I pay attention, when, when I get a maroon alert, I pay attention to it, you know?
Right, and, and this system also includes voice calls as well, so if you sign up for voice calls, and it has multiple languages, so you can get text, email, or a voice call, just like Code Red sort of does, yes, sir.
That's, that's, maybe, that's-
It's ve, it's very robust, my only fear is that we don't want to send out so much that people begin to ignore, so we're going to have to be cautious in what we send out, and the importance of what we send out, so that we don't become, I don't know, somebody that turns us off, you know?
That's right, you don't want people to ignore it.
You can pick the level of stuff that's wanted sent out to you, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And then part of that is user training, we train each of the, the departments to, to determine what is important, and we have conversations internally about what is important enough, of course, we want to, road closures, and power outages, and other utility outages, and things like that, that will affect, uh, you know, travel and, and, and day-to-day business, um, and, um, you know, we, we don't necessarily want to notify, you know, maybe we do want to notify special events, that's conversations we want to have internally, how, how do we use this platform, so, because you're right, you can inundate people, and they can start unsubscribing, or just, or just ignoring it, and that's right.
Okay, thank you so much, absolutely, all right.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of the agenda, but let me, uh, first make my announcement about a work session, which will be on Friday, December the sixteenth, uh, it'll be eleven